Now we've got Pastor Woody Evans from Brownville Baptist Church.
Let's pray. The Father, we come to you, Lord, thanking you for this day. We thank you so much for Jesus who died on the cross for us, and the Lord. We thank you for allowing us to live another day here on earth. And Lord, we just pray for the council. We pray that everything that they decide, that they'll seek your advice and seek your wisdom, Lord, and that they'll continue to keep this city a Christian town. And Lord, we pray that your will will be done. We pray that you bless this meeting. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Now pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, roll call please.
Mayor.
Here.
Ginger Stewart, here. Wendell Walker.
Here.
Stephen Holt.
Here.
Stan Moran.
Here.
Sean Simpson.
Here.
Wendell Moore.
Here.
Raymond Hatton.
Here.
Jim Ed Rantsum.
Here.
And Coy Butler.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Has everyone had a chance to read over previous minutes for last meeting?
Make a motion accept.
Motion accept from Jim Ed.
Second.
Second by Raymond. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Motion care. Now, public comments. Mr. Theodore Washington.
I see, I see. Okay, my name is Theodore Washington, and I have some complaints about our drainage system. And I'm speaking on behalf of my aunt too, Annie Cooney. And we live off two oh one Thomas Circle, Thomas Drive, and when it rains, I like the rain, but when it rains, we got a bit too much coming in our yard.
Yes.
And it's destroying her house. And we have a drainage system that goes nowhere. And so I even took pictures of it. So if anybody wanted to see the pictures. Because I've had some work done, and I've been gone for years, and then I came back, and I'm staying with my mother. But it's a lot of stuff the city gonna have to kind of lend a hand and help us out.
I, well, excuse me, but I come over and seen her, oh, what's it, almost, we went over there, what, three? Three, four months ago. It was about around the storm, I guess. But I think Mr. Williams has give us permission to dig across that lot behind. And we're gonna try to take it to that ditch that starts east of Brown, that goes out around that field. That's the biggest ditch over there. And we've, I've gotten permission from him to do whatever we need to do. So we're fixing to get started, and we're gonna try to carry that all the way around to that big ditch.
Okay, do you think that'll relieve some of the water?
I know what it'll help.
Drainage system too?
Yes.
Where it gets a drain, but it goes nowhere.
Yeah, well, which I'd love to have it. It used to go down that, it used to go north behind the houses and go out to Palm Street. And we'll try to get it going too, because if it'd take just a little bit of water, that and then another ditch going the other way, that ought to help a whole lot. It should. Okay. Yes, sir.
We'll have a little patience.
Well, we, we should have already had it. We've had so much trouble with equipment. I mean, it's been, it's been a bad year with storms and everything else. But I promise you, we'll get it taken care of. And it should make it a whole lot better. I really think it will, especially if we can get both drains going.
Yeah, because you know, since I've been there even myself, I had to spend a little money because the system where the water would go out to the street, I had to replace all that pipe. And it, and it would cost me a paid, a branded fee. Just to, you know, do a lot of that work myself.
Well, we'll go, we'll come over and see if we can get that opened up coming out to Palm first.
Alright.
And then we'll try to get that other ditch going. Because I, I know that that'll help some. So that'll sure keep it, a lot of it out of your yards.
Oh, okay.
If it'll stay in them ditches, that's fine, as long as it ain't getting up in people's yards by their house.
All we need is a boat and, and a boat.
Well, we'll definitely, you'll see me, I'll try to come over one day this week or next, and see about the the one going out Palm Street. See if we can get it going faster before, so before we start that other ditch. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Alright. Beautification team report.
There's nobody back here this month.
Long County Library. Somebody here, okay. Police Department, Chief Matt Edwards.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
In your packet, you've got a report for the month. We had a hundred and eighty-four complaints or dispatch calls. One new felony, well, we had a felony warrant served, and then twelve new misdemeanor warrants served. Six new misdemeanor arrests, ten citations, and a hundred and three actual reports for the month. Second page, you have your tickets by ward. Anybody has any questions? Alright, thank you for your time. We hope it will be great.
Now, Parks and Mosquito, Director Evan Jacobs.
Good evening. On the parks side of things, right now we're just keeping the Christmas lights up and going. Hope everybody is able to make it out for the parade. It's a really good time for everybody that's out there, I think. Moving on to mosquito, which is going to be my big deal for the evening. We have, we purchase our mosquito chemical in the winter, so we can avoid the spring prices and get about a ten fifty percent discount for buying off season. We are going to be going, we are going to need to pass the ordinance to waive the bid requirements, which is what we've done in the past, from my understanding. So that way we can go ahead and purchase. In your packet, you had a quote for one hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. That'd be our mosquito chemical for this upcoming season. We are going to go over our mosquito, our chemical line item mosquito, but overall the budget's fine. We're able to keep all of our other expenses under control, so we've got plenty of room in the budget for it. Any questions for me?
Make a motion that we go ahead and purchase the
Motion from Coy to put
Second.
Eight sixteen on the floor. Second by Raymond. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Motion care.
Ordinance number eight sixteen is ordinance to waive the requirement of competitive bidding for the procurement of chemicals for spraying mosquitoes by the city of Lone Oak, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas Lone Oak City ordinance number eight oh six requires competitive bidding for the purchase of supplies, apparatus, equipment, materials, and services, the cost of which is in excess of thirty-five thousand dollars. And the Arkansas Code annotated section fourteen dash fifty-eight dash three oh three requires competitive bidding for the purchase of the, by the city of supplies, apparatus, equipment, materials, and services, the cost of which is in excess of thirty-five thousand dollars. And whereas the city has an opportunity to obtain chemicals used in spraying for mosquitoes at reduced price, only available for a limited time to assure sufficient chemical inventory to provide services to the citizens of Lone Oak during the peak seasons. And whereas the city council for the city has determined that an emergency exists and replacing the matter for bid if necessary would unduly delay the ability to obtain the needed chemicals and would result in an increased price. And whereas it has therefore been determined by the city council for the city that competitive bidding, if necessary, is not presently feasible or practical and could unnecessarily harm the city's functional capability to perform its stated goal of providing the best services to its citizens as possible. Now therefore be entertained by the city council of the city of Lone Oak, Arkansas. One, that is, that it was not feasible or practical to require competitive bidding by the city of Lone Oak, Arkansas, as required by law for this limited purpose. Two, that therefore the requirement of competitive bidding for the purchase of these chemicals is hereby waived. Three, that the city is hereby authorized to purchase mosquito chemicals from Clark Mosquito Products for the sum of one hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and forty-five and twenty-one, one hundred dollars, exhibit A attached. Number four, that the procurement of these chemicals being necessary for the city to provide for its functional capabilities for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city. An emergency is declared to exist when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
Motion to accept. First reading from Sean.
Second.
Second by Stephen. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Motion care. And a motion for second, third.
Second, third, spin the rule.
Motion from Jim Ed, the second and third reading, title in line. Second by Coy. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Motion care.
Ordinance number eight sixteen is ordinance to waive the requirement of competitive bidding for the procurement of chemicals for spraying mosquitoes by the city of Lone Oak, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Or just close.
Motion spin. I need to, I made a motion to accept second, third reading by Coy.
Second.
Second by Wendell. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. And most of you.
Most of you said emergency clause.
Second by
Is there not an emergency clause on there?
There is, but we're not here.
I got you.
Second by Sean. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Motion care.
Emergency clause.
Set emergency clause for Coy. Second by Wendell. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Motion care.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Now, Community Center Director Mike Brown.
Since he didn't say it, happy holidays.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mike.
For the center for the month of November, I just needed six people, and we would have been even for the, for the last month, so councilman, I'm asking if you, we need six new members, or six members to re-up for this month, and we can be the same as we were the last month.
I'm coming.
I'm holding you to that. Okay, events that we've got going on Baptist Health, which are there every, every month. We had a seminar, I think two weeks ago Baptist Health put it on, and I found out a few things, that there's salt in almost everything you eat. And sugar is really bad for you. So I'm trying to get off the sugar, and they taught us how to read labels, so go to the store and read the labels. November month, member of the month, Carter McGee. We still do chess and ping pong. Solar Clip, there's a, I guess it's a kind of citywide meeting tomorrow. Anybody that wants to have input for the towards things we're gonna do for the solar. It's a Grunt the Rabbit, it's at eleven tomorrow. They've invited some businesses and, and things. We've got a few guys that, for the city, at eleven, and y'all, you had a meeting last month. And as we go, over this thing, it's, it's snowballing. And youth basketball, we're not, I think, third week. My one action item is, I've got in our multi-purpose room, which, only rooms, we do everything. We've had weddings, we've had a funeral, a close. We've had baby showers, bar mitzvahs, whatever, it's all in that room. And every time we set up, we got an ugly floor. It's a, it's a tile floor, and you can wax. It, it's only gonna take so much wax. I mean, it, it's probably coated now. And I need to go in a Walmart route, is to take the towel up and go with a smooth concrete, which will help tremendously. We won't buy any more wax ever. We've got a scrubber, so it'll get a, keep the floor clean. And this cut also is gonna, I've got a couple of other bathroom vanities in there that needs to be coated and fixed. For a total of twelve thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-five cents. Dennis Neal, Resurfacing. And he's a tips vendor, which his number is on here.
Make a motion that we accept the bid for Dennis Neal, Resurfacing, for twelve thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-five cents to redo the
Make the motion to accept the bid for twelve, four, five forty-two, forty-five. Second by Wendell Moore. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Motion care. And that's, that's all we got. Anybody got any questions for Mike? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. White. Now, Fire Department Chief Justin Whittenburg.
Good evening.
Hey, man.
Looks like we had thirty-two calls last month, nineteen being MS and thirteen being fire. We gave eight, four times received at once, and we had two overlapping calls. Any questions for me?
Okay, now, Public Works, Water Seared Street, Director Thomas Stivers.
How are you all?
How are you doing?
Good, good, good. Alright, before we get started, Mr. Butler, you asked about a water rate study last month. I don't know what happened to the one at Rural Water, so I got with the engineer, we're wanting to kind of start using. He's gonna get certified to do a water rate study. That's what a lot of engineers, if you look at the list there, it's every engineer just about in Arkansas, and Kansas City are licensed to do them in Arkansas. So he's getting certified to do that and try to get started on it. I mean, I'll let, you know, the council and the people that might do the study, let them figure out, kind of learning you guys, what y'all want to do. But for the year, we're up a hundred and seventy thousand in the water department. I kind of think we're gonna hit two thousand, two hundred thousand or better. Be hard for me to ask for a, you know, water rate increase, making that kind of money. We made more than my previous place of employment last month, and I've got close to five thousand customers, so I, I think we're doing pretty good. That's just, that's just me. Do y'all have anything for, for me? All month, anything this month related, twenty-four preliminary budget related, and anything like that? Let's see. On the street side, I ordered another fourteen intersections where the street name signs. When we do that, we don't just put them up there. We're going back with twelve-foot signposts, brand-new stop signs, all of that. We've got a bunch of signposts that ain't around six inches, and they're broke over, bent over, old stop signs. So when we, when we do it, we try to do the whole thing, do it right, and not come back. So there ain't really a great place to start, because they need, we need signs all over town. We started really in Mr. Hatton's area. There's Mr. Michael's asking about over at Pleasant and Basser and Brown Street. So we just pick there to start, and we're just gonna keep going, start the farthest from the shop and keep working north. So everything on Brown Street, Harrison Cedar, that's kind of the next area. That's where I, where the signs at for, for this round. And you'll see the budget for twenty-four. I, I've got thirty-five grand that I'd like to go towards signs next year. And I kind of think with that, we can get close to having half a town done. There's about three hundred and twenty-five intersections in along them. So that, that's the plan for signs.
Is there any plan for as you put the new signs up, to get the old concrete filler signs on?
Yeah, we talked about just going ahead and pulling them up, pulling them up. We can use them around oxidation pond, just like any sort of concrete. Just to keep erosion from happening around the pond. So that's where we're at, just to get them out of there. There's definitely no plans on painting them back and reuse them. I'm not that good at stencil painting, so, not, not me. I've been going to primary school once or twice a day, doing inspections over there. I was actually there twice a day, do footer inspection, and a water line inspection, and a plumbing inspection. I was there three times a day. So they're pouring concrete for the footer, they're plumbing, so hopefully the dirt hauling will slow down, and maybe West Palm Street won't be so dirty. Who knows? Let's see, what else? My action item is, we have a hardware and a software upgrade on our SCADA system. We've had it since twenty twelve. And this is the first upgrade that we've, that they're kind of asking for. So it's in the tune of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. Honestly, I'm kind of surprised it's lasted this long. Normally you get some, something electronic, and it goes out of date ten minutes later. So this has lasted about thirteen, uh, ten or eleven years, so that is my action item. Water plant, we've got at the main sewer lift station, I don't, both of our wells, both of our water towers, I think it's at eleven sites, if I, if I remember correct, ten or eleven sites, something like that. And it, it, this will cause me at one o'clock in the morning. Kind of have that.
And this is, we put this out to bid, and this was the only bid we got.
This is just the SCADA system that we have. I haven't bid out any other SCADA systems or anything like that. So whenever we So, whenever we, whenever we start having troubles, we're going to have to upgrade to these, and then they just ran a deal for about four to five hundred dollars off per unit to upgrade them all at the same time, so that's why I'm bringing it here tonight.
Yes, my question is, is this...
We bid them out when the system was put in there, but now that you got the system in, it cost a whole...
It'd be, it'd be kind of like water meters, I mean, we've got eighteen hundred census water meters, anytime there's any sort of upgrade, you don't go bid out eighteen hundred more bags of water meters or anything like that.
No, I'm not saying that we switched systems, I just, we didn't know, was that over the twenty thousand dollar limit? Do we have to get multiple bids?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, we raised it, okay. I make a motion that we accept the bid from Lockett.
Motion for to accept the bid from Lockett, second by Jim Ed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, unless y'all got anything else for me, so I can...
Can we buy some coal mix?
I would rather not.
Or you can go down to Cranford and just get like two or three ton at a time?
Mm-hmm.
We need it.
Well, we, we put Donna's field out to try and build a base in our potholes that we got right now, that, I don't know if it's going to work or not, we're going to try it. But, the coal mix doesn't work either, I don't like it. I don't like it at all.
Alright.
It just settles too much.
We just got a lot of, a lot of spots that's been repaired, and settled.
I agree with that.
And it's going to settle, because the spots that we repaired, it's not settled yet. Okay. That's all I had, I just wanted to know about some coal mix, we've got a lot of spots.
If, if I'm told to, I will, but I sure don't want to.
I know that's it in your responsibility to like, coming off the Lone Oak exit, the part of the new exit.
Yeah.
And then, and then cutting back south. It is really, really rough there lately. I, I didn't know if we could, I didn't know, I mean...
We can call the highway, which we have called one, I know we've called four.
We've called several times on that.
Anyway, it just, it, it seems to just be getting worse and worse.
Yeah, no, I've called them too.
They replaced the culvert on, on the, you know, the Mallard Point, we had to pave that. We called, we called about three times, but...
Well, what we do is just try to kind of wait till we got enough, and we'll go up to Cranford and get some hot mix asphalt, but I've seen a lot of cold mix that we've had for a long time, it just, it settled real bad.
What happened to the, the, we had a machine one time that melted stuff, what happened, was it...
No, but it, it's working, it's good, but we're just not, I quit using the cold mix. That's all, that's all we did. I just don't like it, I'm telling you, it, it settles, tear, then you got to go back again, or hot mix, I don't know that it does settle as much as the cold mix.
Do we use it?
Say it again.
Do we use that machine?
Yeah, if we have, yeah, if we have to, if we have cold mix, but we just don't have any cold mix, I haven't ordered any more, yeah, to me, it was a waste of money.
Yeah. We've got some holes around here, need some hot mix or cold mix.
I grew that, I grew that, yeah. That's it. Alright, y'all leave it coming.
Thank you.
Yep, thank y'all.
Okay. Community development, no, that was, I don't know. Done that. Now, budget, the budget for this next year? I know there's way too much, y'all hadn't had a chance, which, this is preliminary, we don't finalize this till the twenty-ninth of January. That'll be when we finalize this. But I want you all to look at it real well, highlight any questions you have, and we'll work it out, so... We still got to adopt this preliminary, right? So, I just need someone to...
Make a motion that we accept the preliminary budget?
Motion for to adopt the preliminary budget, second by Raymond, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion care. Y'all please call me, it don't matter when it is, I'll meet with you, or, you know, if there's anything y'all notice that we need to fix, or, just let me know.
I feel like there's a lot of things we need to look at.
Yeah, I do too, but I just...
I don't know if y'all looked at it, but there's some things that we need to address, and... Look at it real close.
Okay.
I agree.
Old business, the solar ray production. What was that, fifty-four, ninety-five?
Five thousand, four, ninety-five, forty?
Anybody got any questions about that?
Look, buy a bunch of spotlights and put on it.
Alright, and on to, we didn't receive any bids on our fences, we're going to advertise them again this next month.
When we can get those, those bids fixed down at the...
That's what, we hadn't got any bids to fix them.
Who we calling?
We sent out, what, five different companies, we sent bid packets to? And we haven't got a bid yet. So, hopefully in January, we'll have some bids on the fences. New business? We don't have any new business, do we? I know we're still checking on the trees and stuff, we didn't get those bid out, we'll wait until next month, and... I can't think of anything else. And the houses, we still haven't had any bids on, so, we're trying to, do we get some bids in, there's nothing we can do. Okay. So, I guess all I need is approval to pay bills.
Make a motion.
Motion Stephen to pay bills?
Second.
Sean, you second it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Announcements, our plan zoning committee will be held Monday, December eighteenth. City Hall will be closed December, Monday, December twenty-fifth, and Tuesday to twenty-sixth. And... There's a man needs to say something here.
Oh, we pick up recycling on the second, fourth Mondays, fourth Monday will be Christmas. So, we're not going to recycle, we're not going to pick up recycling except for... We're not moving from trash back to a sadder, we're not picking recycling, we're going to pick it up as we come through it that week, but it will be trash. It's going to be trash, most times contaminated very, very badly that week. Hold on, y'all be aware, we're going to pick it up, but it will be on their garbage stack.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Solid waste fees, the two dollars per month fee for residential customers was implemented December first, so that residential customers can begin using the dumpsters at our city shop to dispose of items no longer wanted or needed for parameters, ordinance number eight fourteen. Trailers ten footer larger are one fifty. Curbside pickups, twenty-five dollars per item. All fees paid in advance at the water office. Please note identification is required to prove residence and for the use of dumpsters. The complete ordinance is on the city of Lone Oak website.
Can I ask, does anyone recall, so, if I remember right, like pickup trucks with stuff in, it's okay, or trailers shorter than ten feet, right?
Oh, no, I mean, there's time I try a full.
Nobody got to charge you a hundred and fifty dollars for one air conditioner on a twelve-foot trailer?
No. I mean, that's actually how the ordinance reads, so an employee stepping out of line and not doing that, they could be in trouble for it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it probably needs to be...
With one item?
It needs to be revisited, I believe.
For, for one item, it'd be cheaper to put it in curbside paper, five dollars, pick it up.
Right, I agree. But I mean, it's supposed to be per trailer full.
I agree.
Right. I don't know if it was in February, it's when we started visiting about it, talking about it. That's when we started talking about it. So, we need to revisit that and redo that to a trailer full. Alright, so, all we got left is adjournment.
I mean, I understand one item is a bit crazy, but also, a trailer full is going to be a trailer full to different people. And some people are going to go, well, a trailer full, that's not full, I could have strapped more stuff on there, or I could have done this, there, or the other. You know, I think it, it's just, it's, it, those, those are some hard things to do, and I mean, I think that's why this has been such a, a hard decision, is because to buy scales and to do it by poundage or weight, has been...
In the first place, air conditioner should have been accepted as a metal dumpster.
Yeah, it went over, wouldn't, wouldn't cost you that, I mean, he wouldn't, he could take it over and dump it off, I mean... Been done with.
The air conditioner was really just an example, folks, it's just a matter of if I've got one item on my trailer, regardless of what it is, if it's a dresser, or recliner, or what it is, it's going to cost me a hundred and fifty dollars, because my trailer's twelve foot. That's the way the ordinance is written, and that's what I was told by Regina. So, that's all I...
Well, I tell you what, you break it down here, Tom, and I'll dump it for you.
We talked about it during the meeting, you guys talked about it during the meeting, and put some common sense on it this year. If you don't have a truck, and all you got's a trailer, then that's what you got.
Well, we need to dress that down and get that fixed.
I agree. I make a motion that we revisit, if I need to make a motion, we'll rewrite that.
What ordinance was that?
That's number eight fourteen. Second by Sean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion adjourned by Wendell Moore, second by Jim Ed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Motion care.